Mike on? Tyler, turn your mic on. Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join their side in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, can you please do your roll call?
Craig Coles, Shaw's absent. Matt Dyer?
Here.
Tyler Pauling, here.
Scott Murray?
Here.
And Wiley Stewart's absent.
Were you guys all given a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting on February 7th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as emailed.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. First, I want to announce that we have a couple more visitors from the Youth Council that are here tonight. I told them I was going to make them get up and do the pledge by themselves, but we didn't do that, so. Did you guys mind introducing yourselves? This is from the Mayor's Youth Council from Belmont High School.
I'm Kim Derrin, I'm a senior at Belmont.
I'm Taylor Brown, and I'm also a senior at Belmont.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thanks again for coming. Okay. We're gonna start with... This is the right copyright. You gonna read it, or you want me to?
However, I mean, I'm the chair for one.
Huh?
I think I'm the chair for the other one. I don't need to read that.
Okay. First of all, we have, obviously, we have some people here in support of Chief Lenny Corral. I could probably go on and on and talk about this man. I've really formed a great friendship with him over the last few years. He's been just a great leader in the Police Department. He's helped these guys get a lot of things that they were wanting to get, whether it's gear, weapons, different things, take-home cars. He's really worked hard for his guys. We're gonna lose him here next week, but again, he has definitely put his stamp on the department. We appreciate everything he's done for us. We have a really, really good police force, and I love these guys to death, and a lot of his leadership, it's helped them get to where they're at. So, I personally want to say thank you, Lenny. But, Anne has prepared a resolution. You mind coming up, Lenny? Sit up there. Kim, you can come with him if you want. It's up to you.
You go ahead, if you want.
I'm gonna let Anne read it, because there's a little piece of it I'm not real fond of, so I'll let her read it.
This is Resolution 2023-2. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes Leonard Corral Jr. for his years of public service. So, we're gonna entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
So, Resolution 2023-2. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes Leonard Corral Jr. for his years of public service. Whereas Leonard Corral Jr. entered into a career in law enforcement with the Decatur Police Department in 1992 as a reserve officer, and whereas Leonard Corral Jr. was selected to join the Decatur Police Department as a full-time policeman on August 15, 1994, and whereas Lenny proved to be a valuable member of the Decatur Police Department as reflected in his promotions to Sergeant in March of 2008, to Detective Lieutenant in July of 2011, and is Chief of the Department in December 2017. And whereas, in his 29 years of service, Lenny demonstrated the ability to work well with city leaders and consistently meet high expectations while serving under mayors Fredish, John Schultz, Ken Meyer, Dan Rickard, and Police Chiefs Ken Kessler, Cook, and possibly his toughest boss, his father-in-law and Police Chief Richard Noack. And whereas, throughout his career, Lenny demonstrated courage and selflessness in his service to the community, and was recognized with the 1997 American Legion Post 6236 Law Enforcement Award for Outstanding Service, the 2001 Decatur Police Department Medal of Valor Award, and the 2002 Adams County Fraternal Order of Police Meritorious Action Award. And whereas, throughout his career, Lenny remained committed to making communities safe and displayed a true commitment to his profession, his community, and Northeast Indiana as part of the Drug Task Force. Whereas through coordinated efforts with multiple law enforcement agencies, narcotics and drug dealers were consistently taken off the streets. And whereas, Lenny has cultivated a strong relationship with the citizens of Decatur, especially our community's youth, by maintaining a positive presence in the community, often volunteering with community events, assisting with crowd and traffic control, volunteering as a lunch buddy, coordinating and participating in department competitions with North Adams School staff and students, including basketball, football, and dodgeball, and also supporting Big Brothers Big Sisters Annual Bowling Fundraiser. And whereas, Lenny demonstrates what it means to take pride in one's work, consistently does his job the right way, and leads by example, and in so doing, earned recognition as the 2007 Adams County Partnerships Community Leader Award for Law Enforcement, the 2018 Indiana Law Enforcement Academy Police Chief Executive Award, and the 2020 Indiana Chief of Police Law Academy Award. And whereas, Lenny fully appreciated the importance of police protection to our community and has been a champion for his department in securing resources for his officers by initiating and maintaining the Take Home Car Program, updating department equipment and officer service weapons, implementing effective and non-lethal force protocols and equipment procurement, and encouraging and facilitating ongoing officer training and certifications. And whereas, Lenny, in his tenure as Chief of Police, has seen a societal change in perceptions of law enforcement and has faced challenges with hiring and retention of officers, he has remained positive, has hired and maintained a young but steadfastly committed and well-trained department who, under his leadership, have conducted themselves with integrity and passion for the safety and protection of our community. And whereas, Lenny has truly appreciated all with whom he served over the years and the wisdom passed down to him, especially the wisdom to be a Purdue Boilermaker fan, and for which he in turn has done his utter best to share his passion and enthusiasm for the boilers with others. The boiler out.
Problem, I have a problem.
Whereas Leonard Corral Jr. has announced his retirement effective March 3, 2023, ending a 29-year career of unselfish service to the citizens of Decatur. And whereas, the Decatur Common Council wishes to acknowledge Lenny's service to our community and wishes to express its gratitude for his contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, as follows. Resolved: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that during his years of public service, Leonard Corral Jr. has been an exemplary public servant and has served the City of Decatur with distinction as he rose through the ranks from Reserve Officer to Chief of Decatur Police Department. Resolved: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that Leonard Corral Jr. worked diligently and effectively to protect the safety of his officers and all citizens of the City of Decatur. Resolved: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that the citizens of Decatur are indebted to Leonard Corral Jr. for his many years of dedicated service as a law enforcement officer, for his willingness to put his life at risk to protect others, and for his desire to maintain respect for citizens, his officers, and the department itself. Resolved: The members of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, hereby express their deepest gratitude to Leonard Corral Jr. for his leadership and service and his capacity as Decatur's Chief of Police and his effort to maintain the highest integrity and professionalism within the department. Resolved: The members of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, wish Leonard Corral Jr. the very best in the future. Resolved: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, hereby spreads this resolution among the records of common council and directs that a copy be delivered to Leonard Corral Jr. in appreciation and recognition of his outstanding public service and his efforts over the years to keep Decatur a safe place for all. Duly passed, adopted, and resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, on this 21st day of February 2023.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Again, thank you, Lenny.
I thought I saw you wipe one way there.
Yeah, great. No, nothing good enough. Thank you. Thank you, David. Twenty-nine years went by real fast. I want to thank my parents for leading me the right way, and I thank God and the heavens for the good Lord. So, goodness, Lenny, and this is where I am. I'm just grateful to be a chief of police, a police officer in my hometown, where I was raised, born and raised, and then I look at my young officers out there. I try my darndest to give them everything they need to protect themselves and protect the public. I never wanted an officer to get hurt on my watch, and tonight, or actually March 3rd, I can leave my head held high because I made it, and I know their wives, I know their own kids, and it would crush me something after, but I'm glad I'm brought on a good note, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Do you want to sign each one to save them, or do you want to go all three of them together, or what do you want?
Probably, yeah. Do it that way. Like, those are...
Do you want to sign these two, or you want to save them until we get the third one?
Just sign those. Do you want the other guy to sign the other one, too?
Well, the one on the better paper for him, it has a date written on it, so you... So, you want to save all, sign them all together, or do you want to sign these two?
Just sign those. Do you want...
No. I'm more of a...
Ceremony. If I could have the other one. If I can have Lenny on there, too. Why? Sometimes I don't put it on there, so they don't know.
Oh, yeah, you didn't. Yeah, but I did.
Okay. We have annual fee-for-service agreement with Adams County Economic Development Corporation. We need to... This is just the contract to fee-for-service with Adams County Economic Development. Fifty-eight thousand, twelve dollars and thirty cents for the year 2023.
And that's 13% of our state that distribution.
That's remain the same for some time.
Yeah.
I make a motion to commit our fifty-eight thousand change to Adams County Economic Development.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. I have to introduce an ordinance to amend the current salary ordinance for our one-time bonus pay for the Chief Clerk and Administrative Secretary of the Decatur Police Department.
That would be Ordinance Number 2023-4, and this is an amendment to the 2022 Salary Ordinance for this year to pay out the administrative staff within the Police Department, the cash equivalent to the gun buyback that Council approved and implemented last year. It's just taken a little bit of time to kind of get things squared away. I know Phyllis has spent quite a bit of time talking to the State Board of Accounts and just making sure that it's structured properly, because the officers received an in-kind bonus, but the bonus was meant for every department member, and so the two administrative personnel aren't issued service weapons, and so it didn't equate the same for them. So, this ordinance addresses that and clarifies how they're gonna receive that bonus.
And this is all out of donated funds from...
This is all been previously approved out of the Betty Walters Fund by council, so this is just kind of cleaning, wrapping up this already-approved project. It's just amending the salary ordinance...
To do it.
...to allow it to happen.
I'll make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2023-4 on its first reading.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Ordinance Number 2023-4, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, amending Salary Ordinance Number 2022-16 regarding the one-time bonus pay for the Police Chief Clerk and the Police Administrative Secretary.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-4.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pauling, you?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2023-4 on its second reading. My short title only.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Ordinance Number 2023-4, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, amending Salary Ordinance Number 2022-16 regarding the one-time bonus pay for the Police Chief Clerk and the Police Administrative Secretary.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-4 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pauling, you?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
This is something that he's been waiting to clean up for a while, isn't it?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and introduce Ordinance 2023-4 on third reading.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Ordinance Number 2023-4, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, amending Salary Ordinance Number 2022-16 regarding the one-time bonus pay for the Police Chief Clerk and the Police Administrative Secretary.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-4 on its third reading.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, this is the vote, but pass it. Motion is second, roll call vote?
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pauling, you?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Okay. We need to make a matter of record publications to these cash investment statement of 2022.
Yeah, this is something that's required by the State Board of Accounts, the City of Decatur's Cash and Investment Combined Statement for 2022. It was published in the newspaper as required on February 6th, or, sorry, February 9th. I need to make a matter of record.
I'll make a motion to make that a matter of record.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. We also need to make a matter of record appointments to the Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Do you have those both ready?
Yeah, the mayor appointed Shane Cobble to the Plan Commission. He is filling the term for Steve Hakes.
Steve Hakes, yeah.
I'll make a motion to make that a matter of record.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Oh, shit. Oh, I know, because they haven't been...
God, man, okay. So, that's all we have.
...make a matter of record, but Dan did appoint...
Phil Summers?
Phil Summers to take the place of...
Steve Hakes.
Steve Hakes on the BVA award, then. Wanted to see him make his search of a matter of record, too.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. Okay. Next, we have permission to pay additional expenses for the boiler at Riverside Center from the CCD fund.
Yeah. After they got into BS, or, the building temperature, BTS?
BTS.
BTS. Went into Riverside Center, and they found some other areas that needed fixed, so they kind of went over their quartered amount. There were other parts and labor involved, so if it's okay to take the rest of the CCD fund, I just want that for permission.
Sure.
Because it was previously approved, twenty... Twenty thousand was the total, and then they had an additional work, I believe it was another eight thousand.
Building used all the time.
Yeah. It's an old boiler system, so it was much needed. It's been repaired over and over.
It's been repaired, yeah.
I'll make a motion to use it as funds from that account.
And I'll second.
Motion is second to use CCD funds, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. This is a letter that was written to council and myself from Jim Spankitchcock. I'm not gonna read it out, but he wanted to make sure that you guys saw this, so I just want to make sure that you guys get a chance to read this. Just a thank you. Did you have any other in the third reading? What was that one's number? Okay, so the last thing we have on the agenda is Ordinance 2023-3 that had to do with number of pets permitted within the city limits and a related restriction on livestock retention. I know we have some people here that want to speak on behalf of this ordinance, so rather than the third reading, we're gonna go ahead and allow some time, like a minute apiece if somebody wants to get up and talk a little bit about if they're for or against it. Just so people know that there is, this is not changing the ordinance. There's a couple things that were clarified in it, but the number of pets or like that, those things did not change in this ordinance. This is an ordinance that's been on the books for years and years, so not saying people aren't for or against that, and now's the time to voice what your opinion is in front of the council. So, if you don't mind, if you want to speak, just come up to the microphone, announce your name and your address, and then go ahead and speak on the path of for or against. So, we're gonna allow people to talk before we read...
Yeah, time limit?
Okay. Yeah, and we'll do up to two minutes per person, so go ahead and announce who you are and your address.
Thank you. I'm Darren Kipchak. I was at 431 Sunset Lane. As you may or may not know, I'm an attorney, and I've had several calls about this ordinance. So, I think what we need is some clarification. Does the limit of three apply to residents that live not in a commercial zone?
I believe so.
Okay. Because what you guys are doing is relating to the public that this commercial zoning statute or ordinance is applied to people who have no intent to use their pets for commercial purposes. So, I want to know, I guess, first of all, what is the city's interest in knowing whether or not I have four cats in my house?
And I can tell you just something, on my behalf, is most of this is driven by complaints from neighbors. I mean, I can tell you that no one up here nor the Board of Zoning, or, sorry, the Building and Zoning Department know how many pets people have in their house. Most of it's driven by complaints. I think we had an instance last summer where there was a house that had 22 cats, and there was a lot of complaints from neighbors, just the smell, the odors from their house and stuff. So, that's, I think, at some point, you just, you have to make a number, whatever that number is, whether it's three or four, whatever's too low, that's, you know, that's what's up for debate.
Sure, but wouldn't it make worse sense to give more teeth to ordinances that impose sort of penalty for irresponsible pet owners than penalizing people who are responsible pet owners who take care of their pets that are not nuisances, that are now facing having to decide who gets voted off the island? I mean, if any of you up here have pets, you know they're part of your family, right? And if I have four cats and somebody has a grudge against me and calls and complains, even though my cats never go outside, and the sheriff comes to my doorstep, the house comes to my doorstep, gotta decide which one goes. How do you pick? And why should we help you? Because they're actually considered property.
The ordinance actually doesn't make you pick. It simply asks you to come before city council and get permission to have more than three animals in your house, or come before the BVA to establish the existence of a kennel. So, the ordinance has always been a limitation of three animals or less in the home unless you're registered as a kennel. And that is for any resident or commercial property, and that's the way the ordinance has been written...
Right.
...the whole time. So, this simply identifies what animals are permitted.
Also, to answer your question, I've been on council for, I don't know, seven, eight years now, we've never went after a responsible pet owner.
No.
I mean, it's not, you're not, we're not knocking on the door of responsible pet owners. We're knocking on doors of people who have 25 cats, six dogs, and nowhere for those dogs to run. That dog doesn't have a good life at that point in time, so, I mean, I don't think this ordinance is for a responsible pet owner.
But can you envision a scenario where it suddenly becomes a problem, where people are petty or...
I think that, I think at that point in time, that responsible pet owner would become, they would have no problem coming to the board...
Again, this new amendment, the ordinance allows people to come before council and explain themselves.
Right.
Whereas before, it was you had to register as a kennel with the BVA.
So, they come before the council and explain themselves, you give them what, an exception? Like, forever?
Yeah, that's how, that's.
I mean, I need clarification of what we're looking at here.
I mean, that's basically how the zoning works, you get an exception, yeah, it would, that's what it would be.
So would I be considered zoned commercial at that point?
No, no, no.
How come a city council, you would be deemed as a resident who has the ownership of that number of animals, permitted animals within your property, and that would stay with you? Does it run with the land where the next owner gets to have as many pets as you did? I mean, they would need to come in and if they choose to have more animals, but, I mean, you raise, you raise a good point in that that could be, that could be clarified, that could be like how, how is that identified? How is it recorded? Or how do you verify that? I've already gone through this process. I mean, one, you're on the agenda, you're made a matter of record, it's in the minutes of city council. So at any point, or you could obtain a copy of those minutes and you would have verification that you had been approved to have this if there was further issue. Kurt, do you wanna step in? Because I don't think that this was meant in any way, shape or form to create the amount of kind of concern. This is truly just a, in all honesty, a clarification of what our ordinance already requires.
It just details, details out more with the current ordinance. Basically, we don't go out looking for the animals. We don't go out looking for any enforcement. We, we act on phone calls and complaints and then we have to investigate. On investigation, sometimes it is a neighbor who doesn't get along with this individual. We get there and really don't see a problem. And it isn't the neighbor next door or whoever across the street that's got a vendetta against this person. Common sense does play in here, but at the same time, the way our ordinance is written, it does give us a number that we have to stick to. You know, if, if the number in the book is six dogs, then that's what we would go with. If it's six animals, that's what we'd go with. If it's seven animals, we'd go with whatever. It's whatever's in that ordinance. This ordinance has been in place since 1978. Unfortunately, a lot of people have never really read the ordinance. A lot of people in it know they exist.
I have lots more questions. And I'm, and I'm grateful to you collectively from all of the people who have contacted me, so it's not, it's not just me, I know I'm taking a lot of time here, okay?
Maybe something that we could set up at a time, like I'd be happy to talk with you and answer questions or like discuss potential revisions with you, just in the interest of time, I don't wanna.
That was gonna be one of my questions, will this, the council reach out to anybody, any Kathy, to help consider potential revisions, like considering whether the pets are spayed or neutered?
But again, again, they didn't change the ordinance, they didn't change the number.
Maybe an issue changed here.
So, but that's fine, no, you're fine with that. But it wasn't, we weren't, they weren't trying to change the ordinance, they were trying to clarify on some of the livestock, the names of the animals that couldn't be in town. That's, it wasn't about changing the number, they didn't, I know people put it out there, but instead of calling and talking to the Building and Plan Department, people went to social media. They could call, people could call here and ask. We're willing to work, that's what we wanna do, we wanna work with what the residents wanna do. So if the number needs to change, let's go that route. I'm, I'm all for it. But instead of, let's, let's make phone calls and try to work together. That's what we need to do.
That sounds great to me.
That's my point. Instead of going to social media, let's call and make appointments and try to change the number or fix whatever, what we need to fix.
Right.
That's what we need to do.
Can I give you guys a handout? These are statements by the American Kennel Club about de-processed rights when it comes to the ownership of dogs and the right to keep and enjoy dogs, because I think everybody in this room here is concerned about losing their pets. And that's scary to people because these are their family, right? So can I give you guys these?
Sure, for sure, for sure. So I guess the concern that you're hearing from residents, Jen, is they want more pets than three or four?
Well, maybe they already have them and they're afraid they're gonna have to get rid of them.
Okay.
You know, somebody's gonna come to their door and say.
So what, what would you consider a reasonable number?
Well, I'm not sure that a limit on the number is really to be the government concern. I'm a Democrat and I think this is an overreach. I think it's too broad. I think that it comes down to responsible pet ownership, it comes down to people who get their pets spayed and neutered, being allowed to have the animals so long as they're not a nuisance. I think what needs to happen is the ordinances that, that impose some sort of penalty on people who do have a nuisance animal should be, should have received, there should be clear defined penalties.
And what do you mean nuisance, just animals that are?
I see same dogs on social media, I think that might be all the time, same four or five dogs all the time. Are these people getting a penalty or having to pay a fine every time that dog is picked up? You know, I think part of the problem is we have a shelter that doesn't accept surrender. So what are people supposed to do if in fact they do have to get rid of their pets? That's another concern.
Sometimes they run wild.
What, the animals?
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So if that happens, then, then have an ordinance that addresses that issue.
Right.
Not putting a limit on responsible pet owners.
Right. It's as simple as, what some of the calls I get sometimes are, hey, this neighbor leaves their garage door open about six inches so their cat can run all over and they're digging in my mulch all the time. What, what do you do then?
Right, well, that's one cat, yeah, what do you do?
Right, and that's only one, but it's a nuisance to the neighbor.
But then there's.
But it's also that person's pet.
What is a nuisance? I have a neighbor who has an invisible fence and their three dogs bark all day long, all the time, and it's a nuisance to many neighbors. Well, is it really a nuisance? It's in their yard, it's a dog barking.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of things to consider and.
There's some gray areas to.
There is a lot of gray areas.
Is that a responsible pet owner?
No.
How about the pet owner, when I lived in Stratton, your addition, a lady tied her dog to a tree all day, day after day after day after day. To me, that's an irresponsible pet owner.
And I subscribe to the belief that, that my right and where your right begin.
Or is lady that feeds all the stray cats, is she an irresponsible pet lover?
What do you mean?
That's a. Sure. There's a Lake Shores Neighborhood Association page where many residents are very upset because there's 30, 40 stray cats now. Because a couple of homeowners feed them. And if you feed them, they won't go.
Right, so we have already, like I said, the trap, you know, the trap of neuter release, you know, the community cats, and I, I mean, there are a lot of issues to address, but I think, I think the community feels like this is an attack on responsible pet owners.
What, what is it? Okay, that.
Putting a limit that is so vague and broad. I mean, if I have four fish in my fish tank and my neighbor's mad at me, am I gonna have to flush one down the toilet? I mean, you know, it's a small animal, define that. If I have four kids, they can't each have a guinea pig, I'd be a kennel life? You know, I mean, it's just too vague, too vague.
I agree with you, and I think that was part of the whole kennel licensing thing was, was to get rid of that and say, come before council and explain yourself. Now, we can move forward from here with help from you guys. I mean, this is, this is what I wanna see. I mean, this is how it should work. I mean, you know, I, I am not, I mean, I'd love for that, I'd love for you guys to come in and give your opinions because that'll help us shape what we need to write. So again, they didn't put it out there to change it and make it more strict, they just were trying to clarify it, which got the attention of a lot of people. So, so let's talk about it. So, so obviously, we have a couple members of pause here, which I totally respect your guys' opinions on pets. So we can move forward from here and have some discussions, obviously. I think, sorry, you had a change you wanna make anyway, so.
I certainly did. This ordinance.
This ordinance allows for you to have turkeys. I talked, heard about this a while ago. We had a person in my neighborhood who actually had turkeys in their yard, and it was, it was a horrible experience for the neighbors, and I would like that to be removed from an allowable pet on your property. Also, during this whole thing, I, I was surprised to see all of you here, and I didn't receive one communication that anybody was upset about anything. So if you guys ever have an issue, I'm very accessible. I didn't receive one comment, phone call, email.
I didn't receive one.
Because people who are afraid to speak up, if they were over that limit.
Yeah, so. Don't be afraid to contact me.
I'm afraid, I didn't even know about it 'til I saw the third meeting. First time I saw it. I didn't even know this was on.
And this is a normal, this is a normal route that ordinances go. We have two readings, we table them if it's not controversial, but this one was a little bit, so we tabled it to the next meeting, hoping people would see it, hoping we'd get some phone calls. And there were, I think there was one or two maybe. So now we've generated discussion. I'm sorry, Ms. Simon, do you have?
My name's Teresa Stein, Iowa 67 North 10th Street, and I am in compliance with the law with dogs. But I, I just got several things with this ordinance. Okay, we used to pay a dog tax. You know, where did that go? We need a spay and neuter program in Decatur, and then like Matt talking about wild dogs running around, and then Amish come in here and want a breeder's license for 100 dogs and you give it to them?
No, 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 no. That's county, that's county. I'm just gonna tell you right now, that's, that's county.
Right, but I'm saying they come into the City of Decatur and run, you know, they, you know, when they get loose, you know, and then two, I feel like the cops, the police officers, like they said, these several dogs that are always on Facebook, always loose, they need to be fined, these people do. I mean, if you're just gonna give them your dog back without flapping your hand, they're like, oh, yeah, good, you know, but they need, the cops need, it needs to be in the ordinance something for a fine to let somebody know, you know?
Well, I'll tell you this, this conversation right here is progress, right? Okay, that's something, we have police officers here, there's no teeth for them to do anything. I mean, so what are they supposed to do?
Well, that's what I'm saying with the ordinance.
Right, I agree, I agree with you.
That's something that needs to be thought about, 'cause like Matt said, there's dogs running loose in town, and there is. So if the police officers are gonna pick them up and then they call the people, they give them back, they need to have, you know, repercussions, you know, that, oh, I better
Take care of my animal?
You know, and fine.
Teresa, I'm curious, you said you have dogs.
Yeah.
How many dogs do you have?
Three.
Three. So what would you consider reasonable?
And we.
Cause I know you and I consider you a reasonable person.
Right.
Well, if you don't believe anything, you can go right out to the vet. I mean, we, you asked Rod, we own half of that vet on 27. We, we've paid for every one to have a half fill.
Right.
That's how much our dogs go out there.
Or do you think there should be no number? Cause some think there should be no limit.
I feel there should be a limit, but I could not tell you what.
I'm just.
Now with asking me without thinking about it.
I'm, I'm curious to yours and others' opinion on that.
Yeah, I feel there should be a limit. And, but the main thing is Decatur, please make it work and get a grant, a fund for spay and neuter in this, in this town, you know? It, it needs done because like you talk about 30 cats, yeah? But why are you putting it all on the, the people in the town that don't even own the feral cats to, to get them spayed out of their pocket, you know? And then two, you want, you know, like if these people are over their limit, like they said, how are you gonna make people pick?
Right.
You know, that'd be like picking, me and Rod's age, that'd be like picking one of your kids, you know?
I, I get it, I understand.
We're retired and, you know, it's like.
Right, and then there's just certain circumstances, certain circumstances, when somebody has 22 of them and they're running wild through the neighborhood and all over people's properties and stuff, it, how do you, I mean, if they don't spay and neuter them, who, who's supposed to? I mean, that's why I'm asking, where do we go? What's the next step?
Well, that's, you gotta, you gotta figure it out.
What's that?
The key word is not the 22, it's being irresponsible.
But she doesn't think she's irresponsible at home.
Yeah, she, yeah, it was.
She doesn't think she's irresponsible at all.
No.
In fact, she didn't like the answer.
Not all vaccinated, she's sick and up to date on their shots and everything. Then I, I do feel for you, three dogs out there barking all day.
Well, to me, it's just a little bit annoying. To some of my other neighbors, they're irate.
We, and they'll bark and we go down the highway. You know, when we hear them bark, they're right back in the house. We don't. We don't have to. There's a barking dog.
There is, it's complaint driven. They could call the cops, the cops could go out there and tell them, take your dog inside, and then there's tomorrow where the dog's back.
So you've got a neighbor that has three dogs barking.
All day.
All day long, but your other neighbor that you don't know about has five dogs inside that you don't hear. You gonna take two of their dogs?
Sure, and as was noted, it's complaint, or all our ordinance is complaint driven.
Again, 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 this is what we need to do right here. That's a very, that's a very valid point, no, it's a very valid point. You can be, we see some of our utility departments going to houses with feces all over the house and kids crawling on the ground with one dog. It's awful, it's awful. So. Again, so, I think.
Trying to define, like I would welcome help in defining that, like what constitutes a responsible pet owner versus an irresponsible pet owner? Because even if I am an attorney, I certainly don't pretend to know any, much of anything, really. Like I need, I need assistance, I do research, I try and find answers from reputable sources. So the more people that I can, yeah, I can garner information from in, in order to kind of flesh this out and make it something that works for the community, the better. So I'm kind of with council and, and the mayor. You know, I very much appreciate the input. I had no idea that, that people were, that were upset about it, none of the council members and the mayor had brought it to my attention or known. So I'm, I'm glad that people are here, I'm glad that you're, you're speaking up, and I am, like I'm listening, I know Kurt is willing to listen, the mayor clearly is a member. So let's keep the dialogue going and let's, let's do something that works for the community.
Let's work on irresponsible and nuisance. I mean, that's the two things I'm hearing.
The other thing that we may, may wanna consider is setting up a licensing, you know, a way to license dogs and any money that's collected for licensing the dogs. First of all, give you, you're in a record of who owns the dogs, right? How many they have, but any money can be donated either to the shelter or another organization to help with the spay and neuter and the responsible ownership.
So that is a question, when did the, the dog, a license to have a pet go away? And is that government overreach in saying you have to have a license just to have a dog or a cat or a, cause many would say yes.
I don't know.
I don't know.
It might have been the county.
Yeah. But I, I think it's a good way to generate money when I do a city administration with responsible pet owners.
So I get a sense that most of you that are here are the, the pro pet crap. I don't see any, or I don't encourage anybody that's like, I don't want dogs, I don't want any of it. You all, you all would be comfortable paying a fee to have a pet?
And you pay a higher fee if they're not neutered.
Absolutely.
But if they're done, yeah.
People are comfortable or not, because it's a law, you need to abide by.
I just have a question though, when it comes to like the kennel licensing and the, and the number limit, I run a rescue, a baby kitty rescue, we have fostered right now, where we have people in the community that volunteer their service to help raise these orphan kittens until they be found to adopt a people home for them. If they have three pets of their own already, they have to register for a cow license to foster a couple cats around to fall adoption?
I think that's where we're going right now, I think that's why we're discussing this. So in, in the old scenario, yes, I mean, yeah, you'd be correct.
Oh, they would even if they didn't own them?
Well, I think it said how many days or, I think that was age, cause you could have puppies.
Yeah, it was, it was adult animals, so, man, I think it was, I think the animals were, were like over four months, so.
I had, I had, I had two cats that were fostered from last year, and I still have in my rescue right now.
And it, I, I think we're at a point where it's pretty clear that it's probably gonna be up for discussion, there's not gonna be any votes on it, so things like this, we can take. this we can take into consideration. But, you know, even in your situation, um, that, that would have probably fallen under us. Hey, here I am, I'm a, I'm a small business, I'm a nonprofit, I'm trying to do good within the community, here's the structure of it, and, um, here's how I, here's how I check for people who are fosters, and I know that they're responsible pet owners, and I know that I have a list of people that I keep, so that if, you know, the city might get called because they see somebody with multiple animals that, um, might be out of compliance or the persnickety neighbor who just wants to stir the pot a little bit, um, we would have ways of, of being able to, to check in with you and say, hey, you know, does so-and-so have a couple of fosters? And then we don't do anything about it.
The only concern was, you know, volunteers being, oh no, I'm not going to, you know, I don't want to have to go through, I don't want to have to go through a meeting to get approved.
Understand, understand.
You know, fosters are hard to comply, because it-
I, I think the, I, I think the perception is that this ordinance is way more heavy-handed than anything that council or the building and zoning, or building and planning department ever intended or, um, thought of it. But it's, it's certainly good to know the perception of it, and it's, and it's something that I think everyone here is very willing to, to work with and, and come up with a, a positive solution, so.
Miranda, please.
Go ahead, Miranda.
I'm Miranda with pause. Um, I just, to add to it, so that you guys know, when people, um, do have to get rid of their pets, we are the people that they often do call, and, um, we don't have a place for them to go, we don't have a building, we're foster based, just like itty-bitty kitty rescue, and so we oftentimes have to scramble or we, we aren't able to help them at all. And I just wanted to, um, just because I heard some, some things about the lady, or the ladies with two, twenty-two cats, and I just wanted to mention in their defense that, um, and at the time that they had their thing going against them, that I was helping them spay and neuter all of their cats, and I was in their house and it was, was puttered, but it wasn't like stinky or anything, but I do agree that twenty-two is a lot, but I, I do want to defend those ladies because they were taking, they were being, they were trying to take responsibility and get it under control.
Right, and I think the biggest, my biggest issue is that, was that when they're going onto someone else's property, tearing up their mulch and doing the, I mean, what do we do?
Like I said, it wasn't neighbor thing.
Right, it was.
Because we got in the middle of it.
For sure, I, I do too.
I'd like to offer a solution for that, so will we do so? I mean, I'd like to address that.
Okay.
I think pause has done a lot of research on TNR, community cats, it can really help with that area as well. And the, and the problem is, don't stop feeding them, that's not the solution. Those, they stay here and go to the other, you know, you don't just not feed them, don't not feed them, or get them sick, and then that's going to turn more ill to the others. A cat will hunt whether you feed them or not.
Right. And I think maybe, I know there was a situation years ago that someone was feeding them not near their property, feeding them on someone else's property.
Well, then not-
Right, and I think that became an issue, because it was, I don't know, thirty of them on someone else's property and not near their home.
Exactly.
That happened, what, seven, eight, ten years ago, so.
Oh, yeah, they don't have a leash to get them.
Right, right. And there were businesses there, there were some things going on, so, but I, I truly appreciate you guys coming in with your opinions.
Thank you.
I think we need to sit down and, and talk and come to some solutions. Again, nuisance and irresponsibility are the two things I think we need to hit on. It's not necessarily a number, like you guys said. Um, again, you make a good point with fish, um, so, we need to clarify these things. Oh, we have someone else who wants to talk.
Okay, I'm Carolyn Springer, I've been there to help Springer.
Okay.
H-21 Jefferson Street.
Mm-hmm.
I have a neighbor that hates cats, so he has collected all of these cats and he's taken them to town, and I have two sweet, sweet cats that I fed, they're blonde. One little cat that sat, I'm sorry, I lost my dog so impactful. She sat by a bush every morning waiting for me to feed her. I fed her on my own property. They, they knew when it was time to come eat, they came. I took very good care of them. We had about, the mom I had, which is in my basement spayed, I'm afraid to let her out because I'm afraid she's going to wind up at the shelter, had five babies. She wound up at four. I have someone that has three of them in their basement waiting to get them spayed. The one, the sweet one, is probably dead now because of the stray thing. He hates cats because they're eating his birds, which, I have bird feeders. There isn't, I have one cat with one bird. I put my feeders up high and the cats can only jump so high. But I do feel like if we would get these cats spayed or neutered, I mean, we're paying three hundred dollars for a spay, and if you aren't low income, you can't get these cheaper. Like, I took, I have a friend that is low income, she gave me one of her flips, I got this little girl spayed for twenty-five dollars and fifty-one dollars for her, her shots. And just a couple months ago, I had a feral that the neighbor and I tamed, I got him four times at the vet, three hundred dollars, and he still wound up dying with cancer. These animals are not asking to be a nuisance, they are sweet, loving animals, and God put them on this earth for a reason. And if people would be responsible, and Fort Wayne has a limit of six in their homes.
Okay.
And, and that's a good number. I don't have any, because like I said, my sweet little baby died two months ago, and I had treated her just as good as anybody's baby would have treated. People that love their animals treat them like their children. People who, who don't really care, just half-half or we take care of them. You're going to find that wherever you go, it doesn't matter what you do to them. I have a, a dog down the street, he's a sweet dog, but he gets loose and he comes down and eats my cat's dog food, or cat food, and I'll yell at him and he'll go home, but maybe a couple weeks later, he's out running again, and I yell at him and he goes home again. But it's not the animal's fault, the people need to be more responsible. It, it's not taking these animals out of people's homes, because if somebody had taken my daddy from me, I would have literally died if I had lost her. But, something has to be done, but we didn't have an overrun of cats in our neighborhood. But, so I hear that the lady at the shelters, and this came from a worker, that they were going to do away with the cats from East Street because they were mean, because one tried to bite her. Well, if you put your hand into a feral cat, that's what you're going to get. And I was out there at the shelter about two weeks ago, and there was probably about eight to ten cats out there, and she told me they were all tame. And you tell me those were somebody's cats.
Now, Ms. Springer, you mentioned Fort Wayne's ordinance at six. Do you think that's a reasonable number?
I, I would never have six myself, but, can, can, I interject on that, if they, if the spays were injured.
Altered.
If they got bad, that should be.
Okay.
Like I said, I have that baby, that little girl downstairs in my basement, she's spayed. I'm afraid to let her out because I'm afraid she'll get caught, she'll be taken to the shelter and she'll be dead. But I don't know what to do with her. But, people do love their animals. I love, this is, that was my daughter, my dog was my second daughter, and my daughter knew that. I loved her with my heart. And people do love their animals.
I have a dog that-
It's kind of a mental thing. I lost my husband at three months and one day. He died after we were married. This dog has been my life, and other people feel the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you very much.
One more thing.
Yep.
It's out of the dog range or cat range, I caught two grand, um, coons myself, and I had to take them out because we have nobody that picks up coons, half did. But I had to take them out myself. I'm going to be seventy-eight years old. We need something to take care of the wild animals, and we are responsible for our indicator too. Sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry.
Don't be.
Okay.
Thank you.
When I get started.
It's okay. Okay, so, ma'am, you were going to say something earlier.
Well, I did have suggestion for the police officers, when these animals are brought into them, people watching the internet are the ones going, hey, isn't that ink that was picked up last week? Isn't that, we're the one recognizing, but when people are going in to pick up their animal, aren't they having to give their name and address and all that stuff last year? I had to call the police department, two dogs were running in my neighborhood, but the police officer couldn't put it in his car, and asked me if I would transport them to the police station. I was going to, until the one dog, when you went to touch it, got a little sniffy. I have a fenced-in backyard, I put them there. Come to find out, the person that owned these two dogs had another dog that she ended up surrendering because she had been told it had been brought into them so many times that she was going to have to pay for it. But, they turned around and those dogs were released to her, even though she had a grinning habit of her animals running loose and ending up at the police department. So maybe, if some kind of record would be being kept of the animals picked up too, you'd be able to see the ones that are continually getting loose and showing up too.
Some of them are dangerous, I kind of don't know. Because there are a lot of dangerous dogs that run in this town. I mean, my dog, both my dogs have been bit, I have almost been bit. I called the health board, the health board tells me to call the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department tells me to call the health board, and then they tell me to call, they think that there's no list of, there's no bite record, there's none around here. We have no idea, like, I feel really baffled quite much that shut, unless they've got a record of it, they don't know if they're using one.
Do we have a dog catcher indicator?
No.
No.
How do you know?
No.
You have a pet, right?
Right, the county, not, not, we don't have a city dog catcher.
They keep them up in town, though.
Right, 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 right.
They're contained. They're contained, go, catch them.
Right, they have to be contained for him to pick them up.
They need to get her up or-
Right.
Yeah.
So again, again, I think this is good, um, conversation. Um, I think we need to set up something where we can meet. Matter of fact, if you guys would just start making a list of things that you would like to see, and then we'll start working on it, we'll move forward together and write this together. And that's, that's what I'd like to see it done. Um, again, it just needs to make sense.
Thank you.
Any, any other input on this ordinance or this discussion? Okay. Uh, I think that was up last agenda.
Yeah, well, I mean-
Do we have to table it?
I was going to say, there needs to be a motion to probably table for further discussion.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second it.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we will table 2023-3 for future discussions. Did you have anything else? Department heads, what we got back here? Well, Brad's back there?
No.
Kevin?
Good.
Chief?
Good.
Matt Schultz, since you're not normally here, you need to get up and say something.
I'm good.
All right. Kurt?
Good.
He say nothing out of here?
Good.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I'm good.